Okay. Can't even record this zoom.
I used to be able to.
Hi.
So, when Sean Ryan was gonna go print this stuff out, do I open this hearing and then table it? Or do I just wait until they get back? You can do all the rest of the stuff.
And then just say we're gonna...
Yeah, if you get your lawyer or something, or the...
Okay. Yeah, so we're gonna, I'm gonna, uh, open this Star City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P. M.
Make copies, yeah.
Uh, here at the Star City Hall at seven oh one P. M. We do have some system issues, folks, just so you're aware. So they're gonna go print out and launch the documents for us. We're gonna start out with the first part of our council meeting that we have to get done anyway. Then we may have to just take a recess for a few minutes until we get the documents back here, just so everybody's aware. Okay?
If there are, you can take them down to order P. H. two. If there's anything you can accomplish before them, so you don't have to go exactly in this order. So if there are any items you can take first, you can use them.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, can you all please join me for the Pleasure Religions?
Pleasure Religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Harold Wiley here? Oh, you're filling in, okay. Councilman Weelock's gonna give her invocation now. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to be gathered as a city council and grateful for the opportunity to live in this community that is growing. We're grateful for those that serve and protect our rights and pray that as we work through the growth that we'll be able to make wise decisions, that we'll be able to continue to grow as a community that has the small-town feel that we are all striving to enjoy. We're grateful for those that sacrifice for our freedoms and pray that they will be blessed and looked after. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to be here tonight and pray that we'll have civility and have good judgment and those opportunities. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Amen.
Amen.
Just as a reminder, please silence yourself.
It breaks it up.
He's new here. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, roll call, please. Roll call.
David Hershey.
Here.
David Weelock.
Here.
Robert Chandler.
Here.
Jennifer Salmons.
Here.
Kevin Nielsen.
Okay, we have, uh, no presentation tonight. We're gonna move on to item five, the consent agenda.
Mayor Tavich.
Councilwoman.
I approve that we approve the consent agenda consisting of item five A, defining the facts of the provision of law for Mill Olive and the things approved.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second. Do you want a second there, or are you just not gonna approve them?
I'll second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mayor Chandler says...
If I wasn't here for Mill Olive, I could probably not comment on it.
Okay.
But the others' claims, yes.
All right, I guess so when, so when, uh, Jacob, when they vote, he's voting on everything but the Mill Olive.
I just wasn't here.
Okay?
Thanks.
All right, you can figure that one out. All right, any further comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Hershey.
Aye.
Weelock.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Salmons.
Aye.
Sorry, just...
All right, that motion carries, thank you. We're gonna move on to item actually six C. Um, this is a public hearing that needs to be tabled to March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so I can entertain a motion to table that. Till then. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hershey.
I make a motion that we table the vote hearing for the mile post common subdivision to the fifth of March twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Mayor Chandler.
Councilman, uh, Nielsen.
Second motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, roll call.
Hershey.
Aye.
Weelock.
Aye.
Salmons.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. All right, we're gonna, uh, is it, I'm sorry? It is seven oh five and, uh, because we're waiting for these items to be printed out so people have them in front of them, uh, we're gonna, uh, take a recess, I'm sorry, seven oh six.
Seven eight.
How you gonna get on the, how you getting on the screen? All right, we're gonna take a recess at seven oh six until seven ten so we get everything set up, however they plan on doing this tonight. Thank you.
Till seven ten, hurry.
Bring back sources if you're coming from seven eleven. This is just good information for you guys. Just like four years ago, we had about three or four each. Have to look at.
Wow.
We love technology, which works, right?
When it works.
Now try it.
They may need just...
Bingo.
There we go. What's that? Were they able to go yet?
Yeah, we just gotta swap out the laptop.
Okay. All right, it's gonna go a little bit longer than seven ten. Would you please? Until we get this, uh... We're, we're very close, Mr. Mayor, please just give us a few minutes. Hey, Morgan, can you go see if Nielsen's gonna be available? He'll start the personal, uh, if he's not available.
He's in the foyer. You guys just don't have it there, right?
No, we have it here.
Oh, you, you don't, right?
No, yes, we do.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, showing up every...
My mouse is in.
All right, you good? All right. It's seven twelve. Uh, we're gonna call this meeting back over, sorry about that, folks, with the technology issues that we have. So we're gonna move on to our first public hearing, six A, for the Keely C. U. P. Uh, there are some rules, uh, when we're doing public hearings, and I'm just gonna make sure everybody understands them. Uh, you have, if you wanna speak at the public hearing, unless you're the applicant, you need to sign up at the back, uh, out in the hallway there. I will open the public hearing and ask the council if they have any exportate contact or communication. The applicant has up to twenty minutes to present their project. The council can ask the applicant questions and staff questions during that timeframe as well. Public testimony is three minutes per person. Uh, the council can ask you questions, that doesn't, uh, take away from your three minutes. It'll extend it if they ask you questions during your presentation, I mean during your, uh, your, uh, testimony. The applicant will then have ten minutes to rebuttal. The council will ask the applicant staff questions. I'll close the public hearing, the council's gonna deliberate. Either you're gonna make a motion to approve, approval conditions, deny, or table the application to a date certain in the future. So with that said, I am going, it is seven, uh, uh, we'll call it seven fourteen, it's almost there. Uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the Keely C. U. P. and ask the council if they have any exportate contact or communication.
No.
Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna turn it over to the staff. Uh, Sean, you ready?
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, Council, tonight we've got, uh, two public hearings. First one is, uh, a rezoning conditional use permit for, uh, Keely. It's a rezone from R. one to CBD dash DA, development agreement and a conditional use permit for a live-work development. Property's located at five fifty-six South Star Road. Total acreage of the property is point nine acres.
Eight fifty-six.
Eight fifty-six.
Eight fifty-six, sorry. Uh, South Star Road, thank you. Companies applying designation for this property is Central Business District. Rezone from R. one to, uh, CBD dash DA. Initial use permit is for four residential apartment units above four commercial units. Uh, the application, uh, supplemental requirements have been met for this, uh, application. Uh, agency transmittals, uh, the offices, site closing have all been included and compliance with the U. D. C. requirements. Uh, the application has been reviewed for compliance with the companies applying zoning ordinance. Uh, lay exhibits, you have a letter from, an updated letter from our city engineer in front of you. Uh, outstanding, outstanding, outstanding items for discussion tonight are approved, uh, commercial uses within the development and future development of the existing dwelling. Staff is recommend, recommending approval with conditions. Again, located, uh, on South Star Road. Clear rail. This is the site plan. And the applicants provide some elevation...
Councilman Nielsen has a question.
Yes, sir. Sean, could you go back to the map? Help us locate where that is. Uh, so this is, uh, Hercules, right here to the north. This is South Star Road.
It's about across the street from the Anytime Fitness. That area?
A little bit further, a little bit further back, at any street.
Close to it. Okay?
And again, the elevations of the...
Okay, good, can you go back to the site plan, like how far?
Hey, so you can't, you can't speak, uh, only at the time. We'll hear come up at the time, thank you.
These are the floor plans for the, uh, upstairs apartments and the commercial.
Okay. All right, and do they have a presentation, Sean?
We, we issue what I have.
Huh?
We issue the, the, uh, presentation and my information I have.
So Clint, you can come up, are you speaking, Clint?
Yes.
Okay, you come up, state your name and address for the record. And also, just for public awareness too, when you come up to speak, you need to state your name and address also, uh, for the record, so thank you.
Uh, my name's Clint Keely, five eighteen South Star Road, here in Star. Um, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council member, members for hearing us out on this and for the, um, the petition to rezone this and the conditional use permit. But basically what he said is, is all there is. Um, I don't have a presentation or a slideshow. Um, we're asking to rezone a current R. one to be, uh, CBD D, which is currently in the CBD district. Um, we're gonna look at putting, uh, a new entrance on the north side of the property that's gonna serve two buildings currently. One, um, we're looking to build, uh, one will be future, uh, depending on funding and how things work for that. Um, we have the, um, the two bottom on each building, two bottom would be two retail units, commercial spaces, whether it's office. One will be for Keely Electric for us there. Uh, we'll be doing warehousing and, um, our office space in there. Um, and then the other one will be available for lease while the two apartments above it, um, will be available for lease as well. Um, and that's pretty much the basis of our project we're looking to do.
Clint, can I, can you just talk to the, your current building that's to the left or to the west of that?
Uh, the current, yes, currently on the property...
There's a hole maybe that's part of this whole thing, right?
Correct, yeah, currently on the property in that, in that little spot right there, there's a residential house. Um, yeah, you can see it, I think. When you get there, right there. So that house is there, it's gonna continue to stay and be used as, um, residential for the time being. Um, and it will be accessed, um, A. C. H. D. has requested that we close off the existing driveway that is, uh, to the south of where we're proposing the new entrance. And so the, the existing house will become through the north and back behind the house for the entrance to it.
Okay? Any questions of the applicant? At this time?
Yeah.
No, you, so, hang on one second. So the public can't ask any questions until your time's called to come up to speak? And then they're not gonna, so I just, real quick, I just wanna make sure that we, that, cause not everybody's been, you haven't done this, so that's okay, right? But you come up and you say what you wanna state, you ask the questions, he's not gonna answer right away. They come up and answer him during a rebuttal. That's the process, just so you're aware of that.
Did you sign in then?
Yeah, and if you haven't signed in, go sign in, or... Well, that's all right, have her sign in on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, go, uh, any questions of Clint?
Mayor Tavich.
Councilwoman.
Um, so how, what's the square footage, uh, for each unit?
Each unit is, uh, twenty-three fifty, bottom, retail, top, it would be twenty-three fifty of residential.
So forty-seven?
Forty-seven total.
So guys, please, do me a favor, please. I, I need a, we need a whole decorum in here. You guys wanna ask a question, you gotta ask them during your time that's up here. I can't emphasize that enough. Okay, we haven't done, you've done it before, so let's, please do that at that time, okay?
Mayor Tavich.
Councilwoman.
So twenty-three fifty, um, per unit, and then you're at, and then there's a total of four, is that correct?
Uh, no, ma'am, it's, that's, um, twenty-three fifty floor space on the, on the lower level, twenty-three fifty on the upper level, both split into half. So it's two units, and that's one building.
Okay, so then it's about eleven hundred square feet per unit for a commercial. So if there's four businesses in, in there, they would have about eleven hundred square feet to work with?
On, on one, yeah, correct, on one building.
Not great enough, no.
Close to, all right, any further questions of the, of the applicant at this time? Did she, I, just wanted, did you get on this?
Yeah.
You did get on that, okay.
Mayor Chandler.
Council, uh, Councilman Nielsen.
So we, we have this, this late exhibit from, you know, City of Star talking about some of the things that are not included in the application. Have you seen this?
I, I believe so, I believe I saw that today in my email.
And can you, I mean, if you could borrow this if you want, but can you go through and talk to these points of...
Sure.
The city's calling out. Thank you.
So the landscaping plan with tree and shrub, shrub species, um, there may have been, uh, something overlooked cause the current plan does have a landscaping plan. What it does not include is the required trees in the front of the property. So this is not, uh, I can't tell if it has there, but the required trees in the front, front of the property, um, one per thirty-five feet, we're, we don't have thirty-five feet in that piece, but we do have trees, existing trees that's just to the south of that. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Um, the other one, um, the special flood hazard area, um, we will be complying with that, um, as far as making sure we're above the base flood. Um, and, uh, having that, um, we got a letter from, uh, the, um, surveyor for our base flood elevation and we will be submitting with that as well for our permit. Um, elevation drawings, they, they have been, um, changed, it did show, they incorrect, we shifted our buildings. Um, so I don't know if you have that on there, if you wanna look at the, the front elevations, it should show the proper orientation on that, Sean. Um, so that, those have, this is not the latest drawing. Um, so the top, which is the face elevation would be the west, and then the bottom would be the east.
Which that's not an issue, you could just label it. Alls are saying in this letter is that in order to be approved with conditions, you just have to comply to all six of these things. So if that needs to get fixed, I don't know which one that Sean had on his, cause this is Sean's presentation. Right?
Yeah. Okay. Um, potable water, uh, for, it won't be used for irrigation. We have a existing well on the property that'll be used for our irrigation purposes on this. The proposed stormwater, I currently have an engineer doing the stormwater design for us. Um, it did say for floating feather, I, I'm not sure if that meant Star Road or, I, I'm not sure what that...
Speak to that, Ryan Morgan?
That should've been Star Road, that is correct.
Okay. So I do have an engineer designing that currently for our stormwater retention on this. And then the easement, um, it's probably not on his presentation, it's on the thumb drive I gave. I showed the easement. Basically, if you go to that, um, site plan again, if you wouldn't mind? Um, basically, it's, it's a twenty-foot swath through the whole north side of the property, that's gonna be a utility easement. Um, city, uh, Star Sewer and Water has requested we bring, um, water main all the way to the east of the property from the west side of Star Road. And currently the, um, sewer main on the east side, um, east border is gonna come up through and serve the two buildings and the existing house through there. And all that will be in, included in that easement. Did I, did I capture what you were looking for?
I think, yeah, thank you. I, I am curious on the landscape design, Sean, given those limitations he talked about, are there other changes he needs to make or... No, and again, again, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, this will come back to us through the design review process, so we'll allow this. Also, this will be, uh, addressed to that, okay, any additions or rules for this?
Okay, any further questions of Mr. Clint?
Mayor Tavich.
Councilwoman. So, real quick, just because we don't have it on video, we're gonna make sure it gets recorded.
So do you own that, that other property that's, that other house that's on this piece?
Yes.
And do you live there or do you rent it out?
Um, it's currently rented out, we live, um, at five eighteen, five or six houses north.
Okay, and so I guess, I, I'm a little concerned with whoever's in that house, if they're okay, um, I mean, but, so if there's eventually four businesses in there, um, what type of businesses those would be to, you know, just for the traffic?
Sure.
Impact on that house.
The, the future plan will be to take out that house in the front. Um, that will be as we develop the back of the property. And, um, the current tenants are, um, a short-term, they're professional, um, travel nurses and things like that.
And then what, um, so I don't see that you're asking for any specific, um, like, business uses or, uh, with that term that I'm, I just missed it. What am I looking for?
Uses?
Yeah, the uses, I guess, the, are you asking for any specific, the ones that are, that are, um, not already allowed in this area?
So I'm not asking or requesting anything that's outside of the current zoning of the CBD within that. Um, one will right now be an office warehouse for, uh, an electrical shop for us. And the other one, whatever, whoever's gonna lease that would be within the, I don't know, there's office, there's some retail spaces. Um, we're gonna sign a, um, twenty-year agreement with Star City or Sewer and Water to not have a restaurant in there. So there won't be a restaurant. But we're not, I, we wouldn't go outside of the already approved uses.
Okay, cause I, I was going through that list and there's a couple in there that I was like, well, I don't think that that would fit, for example, a bar.
Oh.
You know, like, so I don't know if we...
Well, I think the bar, restaurant thing all is the same.
I think that would be in our, in our, um...
Maybe it's in the D. A. or something?
Yeah. The, the waiver is basically that we're not putting in a grease trap.
A what?
A grease trap.
It's a sewer and water thing, so I can, Ryan can talk to it if you need to. Would you just explain grease trap, Ryan?
So a grease interceptor is a, typically there are a thousand gallon concrete vaults that have baffles and grease that, as the water flows through, the grease sits on top. And because grease floats in water, it is not, it, it won't flow through the rest of the pipe. Cause what happens is grease and oils and fats are extremely difficult on any sanitary sewer system. And so we put these greasing interceptors in to keep those greases and fats on the property. And then they come and they pump those out every six months, every year, depending on whatever is needed, uh, when you're doing. And, and that's fairly typical for most jurisdictions throughout the, the, the nation. When you have a restaurant or some other, um, commercial uses can produce oils, fats, greases. So where he's claiming that that won't be a, a restaurant or a bar or something like that, we can, we, we will probably equate with requirement.
So would that apply for like a, um, auto repair shop? Like, is there some, do you need some sort of trap for auto repair?
Yes.
Yeah. So anything that requires that, they wouldn't be able to put back there with the agreement with Star Sewer and Water?
Okay. And so they, the, um, the, um, the businesses that you anticipate to use a space would, would be, um, like conve, professional and personal services?
That's what I would anticipate. Um, I, I would anticipate maybe another contractor coming in. I would anticipate maybe, um, a salon or something in there. It just, nothing, I guess, nothing that would be, what you would consider like, um, sorry, a bar or restaurant. I guess, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Weelock. Councilman Relar. I, I, uh, thought it looked nice generally, from what I could see. The, the question I had was, uh, trash with four businesses back there in the future? Do you have a, a plan to have one central location, cans all the way to the road?
Thank you.
What's that look like, because it's not on the drawings anywhere?
Right, it would be, um, at the end, um, if you can go to that site plan again, it would be, if you, if you come to the south of the property between the two buildings, there would be a spot for the dumpsters there. And it would be a, a single point pickup from Republic.
That's, that's kind of what I was curious, I.
We're not gonna have twenty cans up there.
This was on the picture, so I used.
That's a great question, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on behalf again, at this time? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Mr. Clatt.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to the public testimony, Ms. Heidi, it's your turn.
Who-hoo.
Who-hoo. And everybody, so everybody's, we also have the clock up on the wall here that shows you your timing.
Uh, my name's Heidi Priggy, I live at two oh eight South Main here in Star. I apologize for blurting, but I'm a blurter, that's why I try not to come to meetings anymore. Um, I, I, so I understand the commercial thing, and I embrace that, because that's what's happening. My concern is always lighting, I, I'm always anticipating that the lighting could be reduced by ten PM, because we are still predominantly a residential neighborhood, until we become more predominantly commercial, that's where we're at. And then the other thing, which is a pet peeve, is whatever that front elevation is, if it could be wrapped around the back, because everybody on Main Street, which I think is going to be the focal point of the CBD district, is looking at that, and so all these neighbors who no longer see the sunset, whatever that back elevation looks like, if it could look as good as the front. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
That's my thing. Thank you, thank you.
Did you, so just before I have you sit down, though, you were gonna say something, I just want to make sure you get it out, if you were gonna say something.
I was actually not blurting to, I was blurting to them.
Okay, all right.
I'm a blurter. Um, I, it was forty-seven hundred square feet per building.
Yep.
So it's two stories, so it's gonna be like the trade towers from Main Street, looking back at those, so I'm just hoping.
Less than thirty-five feet, so our height limit is thirty-five feet in the city? So any of the, I don't, I, he can answer the question when he gets back, let's tell you what height the building's gonna be.
You never set my clock, so. So the other thing is, um, when, when they decided to go a central business district on our street, um, I never really got, uh.
So that, that came in with, uh, comprehensive plan four years ago?
No, I, we hosted a meeting, you actually came to it at the church.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, but I, I never really got the vibe, or the style, or what we were searching for, so you said the San Antonio River District, which of course I, I Googled, but I'm just wondering, yeah.
So we have an architectural overlay that's, uh, for the CBD, that's in our system, um, and we can email that to you, so you have it.
If I can Google, if I can look at it, I will.
Go to the city code, our Star, Star, the Star's website, go to Planning and Zoning, and it's in there.
Okay.
And it shows you the document that talks about what the, uh, architectural overlay. So when, when we go through the plant, the, um, design review, that's what they're gonna look at, and look at the building and make sure it complies with that architectural overlay.
Good.
Just a Mount Modern thing.
So a lot of times when I look at buildings, they do something really, uh, tricky on the front, it looks good, but around the back, it's like vinyl siding, so I'm just hoping that they can continue the design, so whatever we're looking at from Main Street, is it visually appealing to us?
No, I, I understand, we'll have to answer that when he gets back.
Cool, thank you.
Absolutely. Time, your time is now over there.
Oh, I still have more time.
Where's Ryan at? Do you have it in here?
Hey, you, as soon as you ask questions, it's all off.
Don't change it yet. Okay, Ms. Susan.
Susan Avis, two ten South Main Street. Um, as the previous speaker spoke, um, I would just say that as Star continues to grow and more commercial space continues to impact primarily residential neighborhoods, my sincere hope is that this council will be sensitive to the residents that surround the project, and from excessive nightlight, night lighting. Additionally, that these projects would be required to install significant landscaping, so that the neighbor's view is not into like a big cement fortress. That was a question I had, what is the height of the building? And if we could get the dimensions on what, what the size of, um, the forty-seven hundred square foot, what that, what that is length and width would be helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miggy? Ms. Miggy, is that right?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Miggy, so.
Is, is it okay to leave the microphone, what?
Yes, take your name and address.
Micky Openshaw, I'm at one seven five nine North Brandon, but eight oh nine.
So hang on, you gotta stay there.
That's my mom's house.
Oh, that's your mom's house, right?
Yes, and so.
Right to the north, south, east, west?
It's eight oh nine, it's like the pasture that backs up to this.
Right, oh, right there, got you.
Yeah, that's my mom. And I'm here on her behalf, she's eighty-eight, and she's like, I'm not even going. So, um, but her concern also is the lighting, you know, what's gonna be glaring in her windows of her house that she has lived in for sixty-five years? And, um, and also, how does it look? So I'm, I'm wondering, your two buildings, it looks like from the site plan that you're gonna have one basically butted up to the back of the property, like to my mom's fence?
Yeah, right there, that, that is the eastern property line, yep.
Okay, and so is there like a buffer there, or are we just like butted up to that building, or is there some landscaping for our cows to eat on your side of the fence? Or, you know, what does that look like, um, of the parking spaces, as people pull into those additional parking spaces, you know, do their lights just shine in my mom's family room, sort of thing? So just kind of getting a visual of how that's going down, are you building the, building them simultaneously, or the back one's going in first, then you're tearing down the front house and the front one's going in, and kind of what, what that looks like, sort of thing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Miggy, I appreciate it. So that was good. So we'll have, Hugh, Hugh can come up and answer these questions. Clint, there's nobody else that signed up?
Thank you. Well, I can address all three of your questions, or one of your questions for all three of you, on the lighting. So, I mean, we do have to comply with the City of Star's lighting ordinance for, um, for access, for easement, for parking, for all that stuff, so we do have to have a certain amount of lighting. We do also anticipate to have full cutoffs on our lighting, which basically means that they shed down, they don't shed out, and when you see it from the face, you don't see a light, you see the fixture, so it shines down. So I don't anticipate lighting being obtrusive, or, um, you having an issue with that. Um, to Heidi's front elevation, currently it's not, um, we don't intend to wrap around the wood grain look on the buildings, but in the end, it comes back down to, um, the design review, whatever the requirements they get put on us for that.
So just real quick, I'm gonna just let you know, in our design reviews, we've typically made them do that on these other new buildings that have come through, so I would prefer to do something.
Okay.
To give us some of that breakup a little bit.
Sure. Heidi's question on the building height, that's thirty-two feet roughly above finished height, uh, finished ground. Uh, to Susan's question on the landscaping, um, I mean, we're gonna meet the, at least the minimum required by City of Star, uh, there are gonna be some, some grass lawn spaces, some trees, um, there will be some smaller shrubs, um, you know, around the, the back of the area as well. But I think, I think Heidi's concern, yeah, I think that was on Heidi's, was about building a buffer behind the building, we're not, we're not planning to do that currently. Um, we're just gonna have the back of the building and a lawn space with some trees, but not necessarily a large buffer of.
Trees, a tree. The gray part is like lawn and trees?
Okay, and then, um, I think Susan asked the size, the footprint of the building. The footprint is fifty feet, which should be go north to south, and forty-seven feet, which would go east to west on each building. For Micky, um, the rear of the building was based on the required setback, uh, for residential behind, which is fifteen feet off the rear, or the east property line on this. This parking space light issue, uh, Micky, I appreciate that input, um, that didn't occur to me, um, so I think what we would do is, um, the parking spaces on the east property you're talking about, we'll build, um, probably a four-foot wall to where it will block the lights from shedding all the way through to the east.
Okay.
So that, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Block headlights?
And then. And then building, um, I think you asked if we're building simultaneous, or one after the other, or building one knocking the house down. Our current plan is to build the furthest east building, um, the next one, if, if it is gonna work for us, we'll build the next one to the west. And I don't have a timeframe or a current reason to remove the house, um, unless we, we find that there's a, a better suited purpose for that front of the property.
Okay. So on that, just real quick, stay up there real quick, so on that back buffer, it's a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, basically?
Minimum.
Minimum, right? So that has two trees, at lea, I mean, it's gonna have to follow our code with the number of trees and stuff like that, right? Okay. And a grass and shrubs back there as the buffer between the two properties, just to be clear.
Sure, I, I mean, I, I may be incorrect, I thought that was, um, street property, not.
Well, I mean, but it's fifteen foot, I mean, we're gonna probably want some sort of, I can, I, I, just knowing.
Yeah.
Books up there, probably some trees and stuff planted along the backside there to gray some. Breakup, I guess, a little bit?
Sure.
You know, and what kind of trees, that's, that's up to you guys to figure out, right? But, uh.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, any questions of Mr. Clatt? Mr. Mayor? This is your time, yes, sir?
Would you be willing to make that a six-foot fence where they're parking straight in?
That's a great idea, sure.
Just bump it up from that, and, and.
Thank you.
So jack out trucks and, uh, start.
Jack out trucks. Good idea. It is Idaho.
It is Idaho.
Yeah, it is Idaho.
It is Idaho. Any further questions of Clint? Councilperson, before we have him sit down?
No, I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Council, Councilwoman? I don't know if you have questions.
No, I'm, I'm.
You're good?
I'm good.
Councilman Relar, Councilman Hershey?
I.
We're all, all right, so that is, that is all you have any. Seth has a comment real quick before I let you sit down.
But, Mayor Council, keep in mind, this is a conditional use permit, or, conditional permit and a rezon, so you will have a development agreement. So if there are some uses that you find, uh, desirable, you can prohibit those as a condition of approval, for example, a bar or a restaurant, uh, auto repair or something like that, just keep that in mind, the applicant to be up there in case you want to ask.
Well, so, just, okay, this is your time. Go along with that, I mean, do we just follow what Star Sewer and Water's saying? Anything that requires a grease trap is not allowed? Use? I mean, because we can't allow a use that, if there's a grease trap not being put in, until such time that they decide to put it in.
The only uses that would, that would apply to would be a restaurant and a, uh, auto repair.
Right, restaurant, bar, auto repair, anything that, that's food or grease.
That would suit service.
Yeah, I did go through that list, and I, I noted a couple that I thought maybe we probably can talk about, whether or not we think that it would fit, so, um, leather fit also, and so.
Sure.
Um, we had, uh, so these are the ones that are currently.
Painful, painful enough.
Permitted.
The, uh, the permitted uses in the CBD, so we can all get it, do we get that?
So they are a bar, a brewery, um, laundry slash dry cleaning, pawn shop, restaurant, and retail, and those are ones that stood out to me, um, personally. And then conditionally, um, you'd have to come back, if, if somebody wanted to open a minor vehicle repair shop, um, we'd have to, like, approve that use. And then not allowed is the major vehicle repair.
I'm, I mean, I would like to keep, um, as many uses available that the City of Star currently allows for this parcel. The things that I have currently, um, taken off the list is anything with a grease trap. And that's just something that, um, between city, um, water and sewer that we talked about, just as a way to help me get this property to develop on it. I don't have any current people looking to lease that would be something like a bar or, um, auto, minor auto repair, or things like that, but I, I definitely don't wanna shoot myself in the foot if it's a, an approved use for the City of Star by taking it off on this approval.
Yeah, and, you know, when I, when I looked at the, um, like, just the appearance of the building?
Mm-hmm.
To me, it, like, first thought was, uh, like, a wholesale-type business would be in there, um, like, some sort of, like, maybe it's a small, like, manufacturer of something. But I, I don't even know if the CBD allows that type of use, so that, I, I can check for the ones that were not permitted, because that might be an issue also.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the, the.
Hang on, Council, hang on, Council, sorry. Councilman Nielsen.
I'd be happy to hear Sean's comment.
Okay.
I was just gonna state that the, the P's below the CBD are the principal permitted, the C's would be conditional use, all the conditional uses would have to come back to you for approval, anyway, so if you just look through there, again, animal care facility would be a conditional use permit, automotive repair would be a conditional use permit. Childcare, over twelve, children's, a conditional use permit. There aren't really that many that are in the, drive-through status, it would be a conditional use permit. Uh, school, schools, farmer's markets, gas station. Hotel. Nursery or bird center. Parking lot. Retirement home, shooting range.
Oh, man.
All the vehicle repairs.
A conditional use just means you just gotta come back.
So they have to come back, because everything else is, is principally allowed.
Right, vehicle mission testing is not a thing anymore. Did you have a question, Councilperson?
I, I think I still have the floor, but I was allowing Sean to make a comment.
All right, Councilperson?
Thank you. So, the, the thought that I had on, on this part of the discussion is, it appears to me that we're considering this as a rezon, but conditional use for the entire property, but really the only portion of the property is being contemplated in the, the use of these buildings. And so if, if we place a condition of use based on what we see in these buildings, we don't really know what you would come back with on, on the front side of the property. So I feel like it, our consideration should be limited to, to what we know today.
Excuse me, the, but the rezon is for the entire property, so the development agreement will go for all the buildings, not just the.
Right.
But we could say in the development agreement that these two buildings that are presented.
You can say whatever you want.
Right.
Right, we, we could, but I, I, I think, I mean, it just seems to be part of the consideration here, because it may be full, fully allowable and desirable to have a, a light automotive use of where that house is, where it's taken down, right? Because the access off the road, things like that, so if we prohibit that, or if we specifically prohibit a restaurant, then, which may also be really nice to have right there off of Star Road. So currently, Star Sewer and Water's restriction on the grease trap, I think, is sufficient, and if we restrict it further, we restrict options, um, for that, uh, other part of the property. Uh, that's just thought on that.
I appreciate that, um, thought, because I did not consider that. Good, thank you. I didn't, I didn't consider that front parcel, or that front property, um, and the future of it, so I think that's a very good point.
If, if you're gonna do restrictions, I think you just follow what the Star Sewer and Water says with grease trap.
Which?
Is, is basically, they can't do anything with those facilities unless a grease trap is in.
Those facilities, correct, and that was, I think, what you were speaking of, is in that front piece of the parcel, it may make sense to have a restaurant.
And, and just to finish that off, the only conditional use permit we're considering here today is the live-work permit. So depending on what the work part of that is, and each one of these buildings would have to come back and make sure that it complies with the schedule, and perhaps some other, other conditional use hearings.
Correct. Right, Sean?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions of Mr. Platt before he sits down? Do you have any?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm comfortable.
All right. Anything else from staff before Clint sits down? Sean? Okay, thank you, Platt.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor Chadwick.
Council Nielsen?
Before we go to deliberation, I, and I don't have any, but I just want to make sure that we don't have any development agreement things that we want to, want to consider.
I think there's stuff that we're going to put in, I think stuff like the fence on the back that we talked about, you know, some little extra landscaping on the back that we were talking about with trees, things like that, I think they go in the development agreement.
Yeah, I captured the six-foot wall on the east side that was pointed out for headlights. And also, I brought enhanced landscaping back there as well, which the designer view and all that would capture.
Okay. Are you good there, Council Nielsen?
Well, can I ask about the, I mean, I want to get, get it out right now, so that if we need to talk to each other, we can still come back out. Just on the enhanced landscaping, realizing that these are going to be places where people live, also, if we packed that, that area, you know, full of trees, then essentially, you know, a small family that might live there doesn't have a yard to play in, things like that. So just curious, what, can we get specific on that?
It's strategic for headlights, not, not packing in like a triple canopy force.
I mean, do you want to, let me say, like, two trees, I mean, what do you, I mean, it's , it's showing with two trees.
Right.
On there, same thing with the front one, it was with two trees.
I think the wall will be the most important.
Right, I agree with that. And, and look, I, I don't think we can discount the ability for a case of property ours to also plan buffering landscaping, you know, according to their own desires.
Right. Okay. Any further on, on a development agreement side of that?
Do we want to just, what about timing, like, hours of operation? Is that anything that, like, do you see any need to be concerned with limiting the hours?
I personally don't like putting any restrictions that don't need to be placed that are already covered in some other way, shape, or form of ordinance. I mean, these are little.
Right.
I, I can't imagine anything, well, I can't imagine much, but I can't imagine anything here that, if for some reason it ran late, it just wouldn't cause them to problem. I can see a hair salon, I can see a tax accountant. I don't see anything other than things like that. And especially that grease trap thing, if you don't know what one of those is, just wait till about July, go to any restaurant, ask them to open it for you. It's very faint smell, you have to deal hard.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Mayor? All right, hang on, I'm going to, so it's seven fifty-three, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move on to council deliberations.
Mayor Chadwick.
Council Nielsen?
So I'm supportive of this application. I did want to say one thing, because when I made the comment about adjacent properties being able to put in landscaping, heard a little bit of buzz in the, in the audience. Look, we, there's, there's only so many things that we can account for up here. And on every scenario, you know, the applicant mentioned that with down lighting and our dark sky ordinance, we attempt to address lighting concerns. But the fact is, when somebody sits down in the living room, if there's a streetlight outside or a light in the neighboring yard, the angle might be such that you see it. And, and so there is opportunity then for people to perform their own mitigation. And sometimes those things just happen. Having said that, again, supportive of the application, I find that it's in compliance with, with our comprehensive plan in the central business district and the special rules and considerations we have in that, in that district. I'm satisfied that it meets the challenge of our zoning ordinance, that the conditions of use are appropriate, and therefore I'm in favor of it, and I move that, that we approve this, this application with the conditions stated by the City of Star in its, we have the ID on that letter?
No.
All right, thank you. It is letter dated six February twenty twenty-four of the applicant, that we also, the applicant also built a six-foot fence with the purpose of mitigating headlight and another intrusive noise from the back of that property. I believe that was all the conditions, looking down the row here.
Something about the grease trap, or do we need to not include anything, because it's our sewer and water is doing it? Okay.
Okay, does move.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, second then.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hershey.
Aye.
Aye.
Salmonson.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item six B. Do you have this information loaded for them, Sean? Huh? Okay. We're going to move on to item six B, the public hearing for the Frontier Credit Union. It is seven fifty-six, and we're going to open this public hearing, and ask council if they have any expertise, contact, or communication regarding this project.
No.
Okay, hearing none. We're going to turn it over to Sean here in just a second. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you have authority to see me, a conditional use permit for Frontier Credit Union. Property is located at one one three five-two and one one three six-eight West State Street. Total acres of the property is point seven-two acres, encompassing two parcels. Current zoning of the property is CBD, Central Business District. Condition use permit is for the drive-through component of, of a financial institution, which is the credit union. The finance, financial institutions are principally permitted in the Central Business District. Application requirements have all been met, including civil requirements, agency transmittals, legal notices, and site posting. Application has been reviewed in compliance with the city comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance items outstanding. I include a letter from I T D with a recommendation of removal of the State Street access, that's part of the site plan. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This property is located on the north side of State Street, west of Star Road, and west of the Development Jackson's Food Store, on the corner of Union and State Street. This is the site plan. Landscape plan. And the applicant has provided elevations. And this, this will go through our design review committee for final approval. That's all staff has.
Okay. Any questions, staff? All right, we'll move on to the applicant. Station name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Lieutenant Prendergast, I am the twenty-five oh-one West Pleasanton Boise, Idaho. I'm the representative for Frontier Credit.
Can you spell your last name?
It's P R E N D E R G A S T.
Okay, thank you. Okay?
Yeah, you can start. I brought in some slides which are a little different than we just looked at. I think things have been updated a bit since our discussions with PNC, and ACHD, and I T D. We represent Frontier Credit Union, and a little background on Frontier, they are located in Idaho Falls, been around about ninety years now. Originally Eastern Idaho Credit Union, recently rebranded to Frontier. Most of their branches are in Eastern Idaho, and they've been moving more into the Treasure Valley. Recently opened up a branch in Meridian, and this will be their second branch in the Treasure Valley, along a lot of different plans to kind of expand. They're a small credit union, kind of their focus as a neighborhood credit union, locally focused, smaller branches, and kind of connecting to the community. And looking at the building, I have some slides.
So he's trying to get a poll.
Oh, sure. And I have some print ads, if that's helpful, as well.
Yeah.
Paper copies, we.
I do have some paper, I do have some hard copies.
Just use the arrows to move it forward.
Yeah, we can move it forward a couple slides, because, no, you're fine, no. Keep going to the kind of, yeah, basic area scope here, so as was mentioned before, we're at eleven through five-two State Street, just west of Star Boulevard, in between the, oh, great. Thank you. In between the Jacksons, the forthcoming Jacksons, and the, I believe, Jersey Mike's to the left with Union Street to our west, State Street to the south, so ample different jurisdictions, ACHD, I T D to the south, ACHD in the alleys and on Union Street. We can move to the next, yeah, this is our, our general site plan, so it's a full-service credit union with a drive-through, roughly three thousand square feet, three drive-through lanes and an exit lane to the left, about fifteen parking stalls, and shared access through the Jacksons. So we've been in discussion with them, they have a shared access agreement through their State Street access. I T D, as was mentioned, not enough room for us to have State Street access, so sharing with them, which is fine by us, preferable in a way to keep the kind of maintenance on their side. And as you can see here, it's been adjusted in this plan. It is two adjacent parcels, so per speaking with PNC, we'll be doing a lot line consolidation, which we're in the process of doing for the permit application. So this line here is your lot line, so that will be consolidated into one parcel. We can switch. There's a landscape plan, again, a rough landscape plan, and in some ways this might not match up with the site plan we just had, some things have been adjusted, but should give you a general idea of trees landscaping, permeable pavers here where we need some drainage, we're still working with Civil to figure out drainage needs, and how we're going to kind of drain the alley, this is ACHD, so that's going to need to drain into Union Street. So being in the kind of river plain, we'll have a lot of mitigation for drainage that we're going to kind of need to focus on. Mostly that will be addressed in permeable pavers, the plan as of now. Yeah, we can move into design, to the next line, if that works. Quickly, the floor plan.
Sure.
If. So, yeah, three thousand square feet, kind of small floor plan, the idea is to have it pretty open, a lot of glass, a lot of light coming through from the south. Again, this is one of their first kind of entrance into the Treasure Valley, so they want it to be kind of a signature building for them. It's in a great location along State Street, a lot of traffic, a lot of visibility, so from their standpoint, they want something that's, I want to say, a little elevated from some of their past projects, especially moving to this area, and so we shopped for that with the design. The next slide. Focusing again, we are in that design overlay district, in the central business district. So our focus seems to be on kind of that mountain modern aesthetic, pitch roofs, wood grain, kind of heavier materials, again, a lot of glass and light kind of working in, and then, again, connecting to what we saw with some of the other buildings, and kind of buildings in this area, Eagle, and, again, I think that modern mountain is a good word to describe it, western aesthetic, but not necessarily old-timey, for lack of a better word. This is one of our, renders is from State Street looking north through the drive aisle. These are the elevations, a little different than what we split up in C P, just kind of made adjustments as, as the design develops, but everything is still within kind of the realm of height limitations, square footage, all of that. Some materials, barnwood, stucco, kind of darker materials, and that goes with their branding, which is, again, kind of a simpler navy wood aesthetic. Again, they have a lot of branches and drigs in Eastern Idaho and kind of mountain towns, so I think it fits well with what they're doing. That's kind of all I have on the design.
Okay, any questions, Ralph, again?
Mayor Chadwick?
Also one.
Sean, can you go to the site? So I'm curious about the travel flow for the drive-through. So can you just explain what that will look like? Cars using the drive-through in the mall?
Yeah, we had a few different kind of site feasibility models we had with the drive-through on each side. Our ultimate goal was to have the drive-through in the west of the building, so as cars move through, you know, their light is directed towards State Street and not towards the residential properties behind it. Again, typically, we're going to have that shared access, and most of it is going to move up through State Street, I would assume. I mean, I think we prefer Union, but I've just seemingly with the traffic on State, they would come up through that shared Jackson's access, and then down either into parking or through and queue up to the drive aisle, and then back down around if they need to park. Most likely, they would just exit out of the west, Union Street exit.
Okay, and so if they go, you're just Union Mall, so you're thinking that the primary access point would be Starboat, they'll have to turn, right? Do you have to go north of the Starboat, and then down the alley? And then is the.
No, there's an access off of forty-fourth Avenue, right off of the, right on the border of the property line.
It's.
Okay, so on that right side where the, yeah, home stops the air server?
There's a valley gutter there, technically that's on the Jackson's property, so we'll have to have some kind of shared access agreement.
Okay. That would make sense, okay. And then forth, they use Union Street, then they'll go in, and would they have to circle around the building and then go into the drive-through, and then circle around?
Yeah.
And I guess they can just.
We have enough rooms, we have twenty-six feet to the north of the landscape buffer, which is enough for, for two-way, if necessary, but, I mean, I, we would direct traffic to come around to the south of the building, there would probably be arrows, directional arrows to go that way, I don't, I don't know that we'd make it one way, but I'm assuming most of the traffic flow coming up Union would come down to the front of the building if they needed to get to the drive-through.
Okay. And then regarding the stacking or the queue, so I think you were required for four, four, as a queue spots per bank drive window, is that correct, Sean?
I believe it's, and I, I'll have to check, I believe it's four.
Yeah, four cars, six, yeah, in the code, four cars per drive-up window. So then, so you have three, like, three bays, is that, is that like three?
Three bays, one ATM, and two, like, manual, I don't know, tubes, for lack of a better word, that go into the bank branch.
Yeah.
For the teller to access checks or cash or anything that's coming in.
So, and one is a dedicated ATM?
And that'll be against the building. So, yeah, if you're looking at the drive aisle, the one connected to the building will be the ATM, the two further away will be the pneumatic system that carries those containers into the, into the bank branch.
Okay. And so if you're required for four spots, is that, so people would wait, like, in the drive lane?
That's how I understand it, they would wait in that drive lane and then separate out into specific aisles as needed. That's how we.
There's enough width there for like another car to get by, right?
Well, and you have the alley right adjacent to the north of that for the traffic to flow back and forth as well.
We added enough, again, enough width, 26 feet roughly between the top of the buffer and then our property line, although that's gonna, we are gonna pave into the alley as well for ACHD. There may be landscape buffer in between, but there should be enough room. With 26 feet, that's a basic double drive aisle, so you should have enough room if you need to get out from behind that queue and just exit, that you should be able to get around that car with enough space.
I guess my concern was just to make sure if there was, you know, I mean, we're a growing town, so you know, and hopefully your bank is super busy and, and so that we have enough space in the drive-through for, you know, other traffic to get around the site.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think.
When I'm looking at, I'm just, when I look at it, you have access off the alley, plenty of room for people to get around, and then they can get around by the garbage can come around to, so.
Yeah, the alley, I mean, we've kind of, again, not knowing, again, with, speaking of ACHD, we tried to kind of keep as much within our property, but I would assume the alley would also get a fair amount of use for that.
The alley's a part of the public way anyway, it's a public driveway.
But we didn't wanna design it with that assumption that we would have the alley as an exit, so we added space just to the, to the north there.
And how about your hours of operation?
Yeah, the drive-through, I mean, the, you know, the ATM, you can access at any time. Hours of the bank, I believe, will be the 6:00 PM at the latest. It depends on the branch. I know they're either five or six in Eastern Idaho. Might, I would assume it wouldn't go past 6:00 PM. ATM you could access after hours, which I think is pretty typical. It'll, again, it'll be on the outside of the building.
But that'll have like low impacts of neighbors?
No, so.
Yeah.
And again, I think the thinking was having, if there are lights that come in at night, having that directed to the south towards State Street is preferable to having cars coming up in the other direction if you were to flip it to the other side of the building.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, any further questions? Councilman Leal? Yeah, Sean, could you go to page nine, please? That's the one? Yes, yeah, this rendering, it shows that flat from the building to presumably what is State Street on the left of that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And elevation-wise, are you gonna leave it at that curb level or are you sinking it? The, the building to the west of there is below grade, and that's a, that's been less well-received from my point of view.
Yeah, the idea is to have it above grade. We looked at that building, because I believe they have a retention wall and then kind of cuts down. Our plan is to raise that sidewalk. It, it's higher, I think that property is a bit higher than the Jersey Mike's property, but it'll need to be unfilled and, and raised up to that level.
A ton of people cutting down and raise up. I was just curious what your plan was so that I could see in my brain where you were headed with that. What's the rule, Ryan Morgan? Isn't it supposed to be at a level center or something through the center of the highway?
So we don't currently have anything in our code for the elevation of a building. We are putting in our new code updates that the elevation of the building, the finished floor should match the center line of the adjacent highway or adjacent main roadway.
Just put that in the, as a condition.
Mayor Chawwic.
Yes, sir.
You're saying that it should match it or be at least a minimum as they can go up if they want it? Correct. Okay. At a minimum should, should match that elevation of the major highway roadway. Thanks, sir, thank you.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to be lower, Doug. I'm good with up. The reason why it's going in the code is we discovered that when that building went in, we had no idea that, that that was gonna be an issue on that. I appreciate it, thank you. All right, any further questions of the applicant?
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilman.
So I did see in the ACHD's report, so you'll be installing sidewalks along Union and I think there's a gap, is there a gap there on State Street? You have to fill in also or?
Yeah, they have to do that sidewalk along there too, yeah.
Yeah, so.
To attach to the Jacksons property to the.
Yes, so per ACHD it's a 36-foot, so they'll be actually parking, it'll be expanded that Union Street, and then they'll be parking to the west of that detached sidewalk. So it's a 36-foot, so two lanes and then parking and then a sidewalk. So I think, so this should be updated. I believe that what was seen in CUP didn't have that change yet, but it'll be about an eight-foot buffer. I think we had like 16 before, and now it's eight between Union Street and the sidewalk. It's a little shorter. But that's part of the agreement, yes, to develop that. And then we need to tie that in for ITD with the, as they put in the curb now, which is back, so we'll need to take that curb out and then rebuild the curb and apply for that change. There's also an entrance to the previous residential property on State Street that's a curb cut that we'll need to fill in, and that's in ITD's kind of report, so I don't know if you can see it here, but.
So it'll be curb better than sidewalk along there in the.
Yes, for the long answer, your question, yes.
Okay, any further questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing none, thank you. Sean, do we have anybody signed up? Okay, is there anything finally you wanna say or anything that the council wants to discuss with the applicant?
I think I did, thank you for your time.
Okay. I am going to, it's 8:18, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm sorry, not closing the hearing, closing the public hearing. Sorry. Going on to council deliberations.
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilman Nielsen.
I'm gonna kick us off.
Okay.
So, love the design, I think it's gonna look great in our downtown corridor. I find that the site plan and the use of the property and everything is consistent with our comprehensive plan, it's consistent with our zoning ordinance, the condition use permit request for a drive-through for a financial institution. Feel like this is in an appropriate location for such a building with that sort of use, so I'm supportive of the conditional use there. And I didn't hear us come up with any additional conditions beyond which were already noted in the, you know, the staff report, and so I'm going to move that we approve this application.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Leal, any further discussion? Do we need to include the information, Sean, as a condition about making sure the site's up at where Morgan said?
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilman Nielsen.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion to include that the, the grading of the building, the location of that building will at least be on par or a match with the center line of the road and same with the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. You amend your seconds?
Second. I amend my second.
Okay, we gotta amend a motion, amend a second from Council Leal, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hershey.
Aye.
Leal.
Aye.
Salmons.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Awesome, welcome to Star.
Appreciate it.
Looks good. Okay, can you pull up seven bay for me?
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. That truck? Yeah. Just so I can have the information that there's something to talk about. Please. All right, this item here is, we are presenting in front of you the option to purchase a Star Sewer and Water vehicle. They rotate them out every five years. This is a Ford F-150 regular cab, it's for $13,000, it's got 58,000-plus miles on it. It's a white truck, it's got an emergency signal thing on the top, it's gonna be utilized for our new building inspector as we're going through that process. We have, we need to provide a vehicle for that, for them. So I'm looking for you guys to approve us to purchase this. Star Sewer and Water is a great partner to Riley's, we know exactly what's wrong and gone on with these vehicles versus buying them on a surplus, and it's a great price, I think, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we buy the 2019 Ford F-150 regular cab, four-wheel drive for 13,000 from Star Sewer and Water, and tell them thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion, second from Council Hershey, any further discussion?
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilwoman.
You know, I'm gonna ask where the money's coming from.
It's gonna come out of the budget of the, the planning zoning building area because we're moving, remember, we're moving to bring in our inspectors in-house, which is gonna save us about 300,000.
Okay.
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilman Nielsen.
Do we have a fair market value on this vehicle?
Yeah, it's, it's the 13,000 is the fair market value.
So if you were to sell that private property or private, private sale, that's, that's what it would sell for?
Or more, higher.
You'd be getting more than that. I figured that, I just wanted perhaps for the record of the public listening, this, this feels like it's almost a rubber stamp, and that's because we all feel it's a good deal, but you know, if we had numbers to provide as part of our public record, I think that'd be.
Those are the, so Hank gets a number from the dealers on what, what that market value is on there, that's where he comes up with that, so.
So, Brian Morgan. City engineer.
I can ask for you.
What? I'm also the district engineer. That number came because when Hank goes to take a vehicle, buy a new vehicle, he takes that vehicle, and that's basically the, the trade-in value that the dealership would have us.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do the roll call already?
So traded value, not retail value, right?
Correct, we're gonna better be on it. Okay, any further questions? Okay, roll call?
Hershey.
Aye.
Leal.
Aye.
Salmons.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 7B, the executive session, and if you have a motion to go on to executive session, please list the reason, code F.
Mayor Chawwic.
Councilman Nielsen.
So Brad, before I do that, I just wanted, again, call out that what a wonderful place the City of Star is. It would be easy for Star Sewer and Water just to do that trade-in, you have been knowing that, that we could benefit from that, they don't, they pass that along to us, and that's because of good relationships and working together over the years, so awesome to be part of a town where politics is, is the way it is.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor, I move that we enter executive session under Idaho Code 74-206F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being mitigated by imminent legal liabilities to be litigated.
Okay, you have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Councilman Salmons, uh, roll call?
Hershey.
Aye.
Leal.
Aye.
Salmons.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Aye.
Okay, it's 8:23, we're gonna go into executive session, so I need folks to leave and we'll put everything on you.